All right, it is seven o'clock and I will call this meeting to order. This is our Peewaqui School District Board meeting for Monday, May nineteenth. I will start by taking roll call. Stacy?
Here.
Travis?
Here.
Mary?
Here.
Matt?
Here.
Ashley?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Thank you. Was the meeting properly noticed?
The meeting was properly noticed.
Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oppose.
We'll stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to start out with our student board report. Sadly, this is Natalie Barth's last one tonight, so I'm going to turn it over to you gals to get started.
It's been a great run, Natalie.
It has, yes.
The grand finale.
Okay, so our first topic for tonight is our Pirates Got Talent show that happened last week. Um, so Senior Autumn Chong organized a talent show for PSD students to show off all their talents. This happened on May seventh. Autumn and Owen Hanson were co- emcees for the event and they also performed as well. Couple acts included singers, dancers, magician, sorry, musicians, comedians, and more. And a huge thank you to Peewaqui High School for hosting and for all of the volunteers that helped put on the event. Autumn sent me some of these pictures. A really great turnout, lots of participants from all four schools. And I have more pictures from her if you would like to see them as well.
So next we kind of wanted to highlight the insight courses. And as our year comes to a close, we have an insight spring showcase coming up on May twenty first from ten to eleven a.m. And this will include global business, elements of health and medicine, and aviation. The really cool thing about this is if you attend, you get to see a project that every student has picked out specially to show and demonstrate their learning throughout the year. Then we have the impact green space renovation. We have Divya Brombat and Dana Vanderheeden. And they chose like a quote for their mural. They had this passion project that they wanted to follow through and just by renovating the green space over by the middle school. And they had students vote on the quote, which kind of helped them get involved. But they also implemented garden beds and a painted mural, which was funded by the PTO. And then following this, we have serving others. They are doing a capstone project showcase on May twenty second, twelve to one p.m. And they're just showing off their community service projects that they've worked on throughout the year. I know previously, we talked about the dress drive, so that will be showcased at that. But lots of fun stuff to look forward to.
Topic number three, some end of the year activities coming up. We had our senior sunset on Saturday. It was a great turnout. It was organized by our PHS seniors on student senate. We had a movie night on the turf. There was concessions, fun activities. And then our senior gift to the district or to the high school is a movie screen and projector. So coming grades can continue that tradition as well and they can use it for other events. And then we also have the PLE spring scene, which is an annual event that's happening on June third. A really fun thing over at PLE, all the grades get involved. The ACMS spring promotion is June fifth. And then our parade of graduates is May twenty seventh, followed by graduation on the thirty first.
And then following that, we have our pro start students. They participated in Taste of the Giraffe. And the members helped caterers with preparing the meals and the events and just cooking all the food. It was a really great experience to get kind of immersed with customer service and networking. A lot of the members I heard were very excited because they got to meet the president of the Green Bay Packers Club, celebrity chef Andrew Zimmern, and NFL commissioner Roger Goodell. And the plates were very expensive, they were eight hundred dollars a piece. So that was, that was a really great experience.
So you got two?
So they really did enjoy that. It was just an overall great experience for them. And then to our athletics and activities for the spring, we have Life Smarts National Champions. We have Logan N., Max S., Ben Varner, Texas Mackey, and Landon Pungarthur. And then for Hope Squad, they handed out green ribbons at lunch, which was really great to just bring awareness as it is Mental Health Awareness Month. And then for track, Tucker Thieneman, Matthew Leffler, and Kaden Radkowski set a school record in discus relay and shot put relay. And then the middle school theater program held a musical this weekend. I actually had the opportunity to go see it. It was really great and I really did enjoy it. And state champs for the whipping wellness competition was Dillis Boateng, Natalie Loganoff, Emily Keller, Chavi Sharma, and Nikki Vitablo.
And then lastly, some quick salutes and recognitions. So again, a huge thank you to everyone that put on the Pirates Got Talent that happened on May seventh. Prom, the staff supervisors, Mrs. Girman, and all the students and all the volunteers that helped put that on. The leukemia lymphoma society run walk was May eighteenth. Great turnout. Thank you to everyone who helped partake in that. Our WSMA state solo and ensemble performance, huge shout out to them. We had a lot of those. Teacher appreciation week was a couple weeks ago, so a huge shout out to all the staff and especially the teachers for all their hard work. The open doors award ceremony, huge thank you to all those involved. It was a great event. Peewaqui Scholarship Night on April thirtieth, huge thank you to the Kiwanis and Peewaqui Scholarship Fund, the district admin, and all those who made the night a success. And then a huge shout out to our PHS counselors and WCTC for really coordinating all that goes into AP testing over the last couple weeks and the coming week. Huge thank you, that's a lot of work. So huge thank you to everyone. And then I just want to give a special shout out to everyone here. This has been a really great experience for me and I just appreciate all of you for making it so welcoming and a great experience. So, thank you. And then we'll take any questions.
Nice job as always. I actually, you stumped me on something, I don't know what it is. What's the whipping wellness competition?
I believe that was a culinary competition.
A culinary competition?
Yeah, they were, they were very excited about that. I saw a couple pictures and.
I think that was part of the Green Bay, like that kind of group did the same thing with this competition.
And I believe we do have two representatives of our Life Smarts National Champions sitting in the front row if you wanted to know anything more about that.
Whipping Wellness is actually through DPI and it's about taking the foods that meet the standards to be healthy foods and trying to make them taste better.
Edible for teenagers?
Yep, that's the whole idea.
Natalie, thank you for your service on the board. It's greatly appreciated. But as you know, I always have a question or two. So when you talked about the experience, is there anything that kind of stands out and that you've learned, but then also something that you will take with you as you exit PHS on May thirty first, I think, so?
Well, I'd just like to say that this experience has just allowed me to really do what I love, which is get involved in the community and be a student leader. This has also helped me a lot with my public speaking skills, just really getting into having those conversations and giving my input as well. And I think it just speaks to Peewaqui's opportunities for their students. Like, this opportunity has been so special and unique and has really taught me a lot of things about professionalism, how to move forward in life with confidence and willingness to speak on issues that I'm passionate about especially. So really just being able to bring things I'm doing in school as well as my classmates to share with you all has been really special.
And what are you going to do next year?
I will be attending UW Madison and studying psychology and Spanish next year. I'm really excited, looking forward to going to the university.
Awesome, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I would like to take a minute. Natalie won one of our school board scholarships. And at honors night, I read a little piece about Natalie and I'd like to read it for you now because many of you didn't hear it and I think it really speaks to who she is. Natalie is a student who has not only excelled in leadership and service, but has also had the unique honor of sitting alongside this very board as a student representative. Natalie's essay was a powerful reflection on self-acceptance, vulnerability, and resilience. Living with a serious health condition, she has navigated high school with grace, strength, and quiet determination, confronting the difficult moments not with complaint but with courage. Through her journey, Natalie has learned a profound truth, that nobody is perfect and that embracing who we are in our wholeness is the bravest thing we can do. What makes Natalie exceptional isn't just her academic achievements or her leadership roles, though they are many. She has served as senior vice president of the student senate, a senior representative on Hope Squad, and yes, as a trusted voice right here on the Peewaqui Board of Education. In that role, she's represented her peers with compassion and clarity and she's given us board members a valuable student perspective. We are so proud to say that the scholarship we awarded you, Natalie, has your imprint on it in more ways than one. As you pursue your passion for psychology, we know you will continue to be a light for others just as you have been for this school and this board. So congratulations, Natalie. Thank you for your service, your strength, and your heart.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. That was, again, like I told you before, but those words mean a great deal to me and I just, I'm so ever grateful for this opportunity. And I thank you again for the scholarship. I'm not sure if you were able to read my letter, but thank you so, so much. I really, really like, this means the world to me and it'll help me pursue things and experiences in my future, so thank you.
You're welcome. The gratitude goes both ways.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Natalie.
Moving right along, in salutes and recognitions, tonight we have our valedictorian and our salutatorian here with us.
Mr. Sniff?
All right, well, this one's a little special for me because I've seen these kids for a long time as they've maybe run through my backyard and basement a few times. And so it's been a great honor to work with them over the past four years, specifically at the high school. The thing, you know, obviously they have some smarts that come with them, some life smarts if you will. But they have some, some intelligence that puts them in this position because of the fact that we have a highly competitive school here and class of students. There are a lot of students vying for this, this top spot out of two hundred-some kids. And for them to do everything right for four years and put themselves in this position by taking the most challenging classes that we have and earning the highest grades in those classes is a testament to their commitment and their really focused energy towards their own future. But more importantly, more importantly than that, they're frankly really nice young men. They're great to be around, they're a great addition to the school. They are engaged in a lot of different activities across the school. I'll just list a few of them because there are many. Max has been a part of, Max Smith has been a part of the cross-country team. The Life Smarts that we've mentioned already, Science Olympiad, the national, he was a national merit finalist as well as he competed in a national chemistry competition, was a national qualifier for that. So just really impressive accolades on that front. His future plans are to attend UW Madison and study biochemistry. And then we also have Ben Varner, who was a member of the academic decathlon for four years and was a captain. He was on Hope Squad, played in the Milwaukee Youth Symphony Orchestra, and was on the robotics team, which I think we were competing with this evening for your time, is that correct? And he was also a national merit finalist. He is also going to UW Madison and studying political science and economics. So two fine young men, we're very proud of them or proud to introduce them to you this evening. So our salutatorian, Max Smith, if you could stand up please. And our valedictorian, Ben Varner, if you could recognize them. They've prepared some, prepared some speeches for you this evening, correct? Or maybe you guys might want to just ask them some questions.
Hello, everyone.
Well, I'd like to ask you a question that I often ask at, when we do the student interviews. And that question is this. When you look back on your four years here at Peewaqui High School, is there one moment, one accomplishment that sticks out to each of you as this is something you really feel proud of?
I'll go first. This is pretty recent and most likely applies to Ben as well. But as you all have heard many times already, we're both part of the Life Smarts team. And in April, we, in our second year participating, we won the national competition. So that means we came first out of, I think, forty-five, fifty teams. And that was really special to us because not only did it allow us to like build our knowledge through experience and get that real-world application, because Life Smarts is a program that teaches consumer knowledge and real-life, real applicable skills like personal finance and consumer knowledge. It was also a great experience to be able to compete and meet other teams and make those connections with those other people. And so I think that experience was really great for me and everyone else to like build that real-world application of things we learned.
For me, while there are a lot of things, both extracurricularly and academically that I'm proud of, one of the, some of the most proud of things that I've accomplished in high school are the connections that I've made with other people, whether it's other students or other staff members or, or not other staff members, but staff members or what, whatnot. Because those are really the things that lay the foundation for who I am as a person and will push me forward into the future. And so a lot of these people, Max included, Natalie, and I've met a lot of you on the board now as well, that, those are the things that I know will really both help me in the future and really make me proud right now. And so that's what I really like that I've gotten out of this high school experience.
I have a question. So obviously on May thirty first, you will be graduating. But then I think whatever is it, June fifth, we have the eighth grader promotion. So what would you tell an incoming eighth grader at Peewaqui High School? What should they do to get the most out of their high school career? What suggestions, ideas would you have for them?
This might be a little bit hypocritical, but don't care about grades too much.
Yeah, very hypocritical.
And they're, they're definitely important, right? Like, we, you can't escape that. But like I said earlier, the things that I really loved the most about high school were the, the parts that weren't like school, which sounds weird. But it's, it's the people I met, it's the, it's the lessons I learned in my classes, whether that's time management or how to really add unique voice to the work that I do. And so it's not about the math you learn, it's not about the English you learn, and it is about that. But it's also about how I can keep moving forward, both learning wise and also socially with other people. And so while you should really put a lot, you should, you should put stuff, work into school, you should also put work into the, that higher level stuff that will make you successful in the future and in life in general.
I think one of the biggest things I've learned throughout high school is you need to stay curious. I think a lot of kids fall into this trap of, of doing school just for the sake of doing school. And I think one of the things that really helped me succeed in school was finding things to be curious about and finding things that I enjoyed, even though not everyone enjoys reading To Kill a Mockingbird and English nine. You know, there, there are always things that you can find that you can enjoy. And that makes learning, you learn more by doing that and you also are more, like it's more enjoyable to do that. And I think it really brings a lot of success for you when you follow that philosophy.
Are your parents here tonight too, with you guys? Awesome, thank you, parents, and obviously you've got two fine young men there, so.
I look forward to celebrating you at the commencement ceremony. And I just have one final thing to say, once a pirate?
Always a pirate.
Always a pirate. Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, moving right along with salutes, I would like to salute three individuals that I think have really put themselves out there this week, this past week, a very difficult week for our school district, for our community. I want to salute Mike Cady, who sits at the front of the helm. And he has such an empathetic compassionate spirit. And when tragedy strikes, I think he's the right one to be sitting there because I see true compassion, the way he deals with people. And then I also want to thank our two SROs, Julie Budenhagen and Larissa Wayack. There again, the countless hours that they put in to work on this situation and the emotional countenance it took to deal with it, I think just deserves a salute and a great thank you. So specifically to these three individuals, I really want to say a heartfelt thank you.
Thank you, Bren.
Bren, you read my mind, of course. Evil entered our campus and it's heartbreaking and it's just really hard to even comprehend. But to see the leadership step up, I just have a few people I want to add to your list. Brian, I, I can't imagine what's going on in your building right now. And I just thank you guys so much, Beth, for your leadership and for your caring compassion for the families and the people in this community. I also, this week, we learned that Katie Spadoni had given some advice to, to the staff on campus about how to deal with the situation in their own classrooms and I thought that was beautiful. And Brian, your wife stepped up and provided a resource to our community. And it's just, there's so many wonderful things about Peewaqui. I've known that for the twenty-plus years I've lived here. And I hate to see the tragedy that happens. But to see the good people that we have in our community out of that tragedy is very heartwarming and helps me to know that there, the sun will rise and there will be a better day and we will get through this together. So I just thank you so much.
Thank you, Stacy. Larry?
I have a couple of items too. On Friday night, I attended the WCTC dual enrollment program, which highlights students that are still in high school, but they're going through programs at the WCTC campus. And Peewaqui had five students that were involved in different areas. So Jonah Ding was involved in the tool and die and CNC welding and fabrication. We had Taylor Goines and Aaron Lovis. And obviously in light of our planned construction and remodeling of our tech ed areas, great for that. In the school of health, Melanie Nelson had completed actually two years in a program there. And then for our school of protective, protective and human services, criminal justice studies, there was an Isabella Faulkner that was there. So they were going through and got recognition in terms of the dual enrollment program at WCTC, which is again, a huge, huge plus for the student and for the families in terms of, because the cost of doing that is through our schools. So it's a great, great program for our students to take advantage of, so.
Any other board members?
I think our students did a really good job of coming up with the list too, so thank you. That's big help to all of us.
Yes, thank you. Edmund?
You guys have anything? In other words, I have.
I'd like to recognize Tara Cone from the business office, who achieves a certification through the Wisconsin School Business Officials. And basically, it's a certification in school finance. So taking that time to do a deeper understanding of, of the system in which she works. And also Olivia Gill, custodial operations supervisor, for also completing the certification core, or the certification series of coursework for custodial, custodial operations.
I'd like to recognize, actually Colin Jacobs and Sandy Krukowski. We have been a little short staff in our food service staff at Peewaqui Lake Elementary. So Colin and Sandy have pitched in to help out. So kudos to them for volunteering and helping out our kitchen staff.
All right, I just have a couple. I would like to recognize John Gann, who on Friday was recognized with the Wallace E. Zastro Achievement Award from the Wisconsin Association of School Business Officials. This is the highest award that John's Professional Association awards. Extremely well-deserved recognition for John, who's previously been a business manager of the year. So I think, I think you can drop the mic now. You have, you've really. You have, you've really, you've got all the, all the big ones from, from there, so congratulations to John, well-deserved. I'd like to recognize Jeff Behrens for the work he did, um, and the enthusiasm he brings to the, um, sports awards, uh, that were on Sunday night. Um, he did a really good job, uh, with that program, recognizing athletes across all of our sports, um, uh, on Sunday evening. And then, uh, really everybody who was involved with the, um, you don't have to write a card just to everybody, Tammy, that's a little broad. Um, but, uh, I just do want to highlight a couple of people with the Open Door Awards, um, our first, uh, run at that, really good, um, feedback. It was a fun night. Um, I think our staff that was celebrated there really appreciated it. Um, you know, Colin Jacobs, uh, Adriana Plack, Tammy, Miranda, Stacy for your work with fundraising are, are people that, uh, stand out. Lisa Dennis for bringing the idea forward. Um, so I, I think it was a really, really good event, and appreciate everybody that was involved with it.
Thank you. Moving right along, next we have Spotlight on Learning, and tonight, we have Peewaiki Lake Elementary, and we have Brian Siegel, our principal, Beth Ingersoll, our associate principal, and I think various other staff here.
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to the experts in just a second. Well, as we get that set, um, we know that learning never looks the same for any two kids. Um, and we really focus this year on All Means All. We know that as a district, we're looking at students that may have an alternate path, uh, to achieving their academic goals, what does that look like for them? And as a part of this, um, our special education teachers took on a project with Carrie Rudolphy, who is one of our academic coaches, focusing on literacy, and what they looked at is writing in the primary grades. And if you know anything about early elementary, writing is probably one of the hardest topics, one of the hardest things that kids take on. Um, so they developed, um, a progression so that no matter where the student is, we can look at their progress and celebrate their growth as a writer, and we're hoping that this eventually grows into, um, a larger district-wide project and even look at other academic areas and how we can track student growth, um, over time.
Thanks. I brought them all with me today.
All right, you got the whole team here.
The whole team's here. So I'm Carrie Rudolphy, I'm one of the instructional coaches at PLE, and, um, this was one of the most fun projects that, um, I worked on this year with all the actuality work. It's refreshing to talk about something else. Um, so last year, we had the opportunity for Matt Glover, um, educational consultant and writing expert, to come spend a week in Peewaiki with us, which was exceptional. Um, any literacy teacher from four K to fifth grade, um, had a day with Matt, and we were able to learn together with him. Um, so we know that we learn by doing, um, those smart young gentlemen in the front row said just that, um, and we knew that we wanted three threads to be throughout all the learning for four K teachers all the way through fifth grade. The first topic was interest and choice. Um, writing's hard, Mr. Siegel said that very well, um, and we know that we value students having choice in their writing, and even though there's standards and things that we're teaching them, there's lots of choice they can have, whether it's around the tools that they're writing, the paper they have, where they're sitting, the books that they're reading to get there. Um, so that's one of the things that Matt really helped us focus on during our time together. The second one was differentiated instruction. So really, how are we meeting the needs of all of our learners? And he really dove into the nudge versus the push. If I were to nudge a student, I'm going to do something really quickly alongside of them, and it's something they can replicate when I walk away. Um, a push would be something that we're doing more deeply with them, but when we walk away, they're still going to need our help. So finding that balance between giving the student that very next step that they can be successful at. Um, we were able to step into classrooms and watch him do this work, sailing up next to kids he's never met in his life, um, and being able to read their writing with them and helping, um, figure out what goals were next, um, for them. And then, of course, the frequency of writing. Um, we write every day and we write often. It's really important that kids know that even when they're done with school, they're still going to be writing for various purposes, so it's good to hone our craft while we're together. So, um, there was a growing influence with Matt Glover's work, and through his consultation and time with us, that week he was there, there was lots of things that we accomplished, many of which aren't on this slide. Um, but we modified some of our research-based units that we have, and teachers, um, felt compelled to even do some composition of units and some writing through progression. Um, our favorite unit that we've written was in five K, it's an illustration unit. Kindergartners come to us, and a lot of them don't have all their letter sound acquisitions, so putting those things on a page can be hard, but we can teach them how to illustrate and illustrate well, and they can write books across the pages. Um, they practice the art of nudging, um, versus pushing and conferring with students each and every day. Um, we really focused on mentor texts, and what are we putting in front of kids? If we're teaching them how to write, what books are we using to demonstrate that, whether they're published or whether they're teacher-created? And then, one of the best outcomes was, um, increased levels of student engagement and excitement for writing. Um, teachers were saying kids love to write. Uh, they'd say, "Writing time is over," and they would say, "Ah," and that's music to every teacher's ears. Um, I argue, though, and they can speak to some of that, is I think it increased, um, teacher engagement, too. It's fun to learn something new together and have a fresh perspective, and so teachers were feeling a little rejuvenated, um, and ready to teach writing. So with that, um, I'm going to introduce the real experts in the room. Um, they got wind, so it's a, it's a division, it's some regular ed teachers and it's their special ed partners up here together. Um, and the special educators got wind of the work that was done with the regular ed teachers, and they wanted in. There was a need for years to come together over the topic of writing, um, and it can be very complex with a diverse set of learning needs. Um, they were looking for more vertical alignment, they were looking for more learning around emergent writing, um, and talking with Erin Meisel, she said, "How do we develop a writing progression that encompasses all the students while providing the experience where all kids want to write and see themselves as writers?" And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to them.
I'm a special education teacher, um, and our team really worked collaboratively on how we can increase engagement, increase independence with our students, and build that excitement for all of our students, including our special education students. So we, um, dove deep into Matt Glover's book, Already Ready, and we learned a lot through that. But encompassing that was a quote that he had in his book, um, that really kind of centered our work. It says, "In all seriousness, if children who are making books aren't enjoying themselves, something is amiss. Writing should provide children with an invitation, not an expectation. And when children choose to make books, they do so because the idea of making them seems inviting to them." So with that, we dove deep into, um, some of the content from Matt Glover. We talked about what it means to be a writer, we had choice and topic, and the kids can grow confidence through that, empower as an author. We talked about understanding the text, the type of work that students can, um, give us. And then through that came six critical skills. And those six skills are intentionality, revision, thinking ahead, intentional craft, stamina, and problem-solving. And we believe all six of these skills can be used across, uh, the district, no matter what age you are or what development you are.
I am Erin Meisel, and I am super excited to share that we actually did come up with a writing progression. Um, so we, I asked and we delivered. Um, so our team looked a lot at not only the writing standards that we use all the time, um, but also how does fine motor, um, fit into this, and what art standards are needed for our kids before. So a lot of the kids that we work with have a lot of, um, trouble putting words down on paper, even letters down on paper. So we went all the way back to like, what does it have to look like as a pre-literate writer that's going to intentionally share their thinking? Um, we broke it down, the progressions down into four developmental stages that go all the way from like, a scribble stage, which you can see, we added also some student examples, um, and to then using some letters, to then actually writing sentences. Um, our biggest challenge with a lot of our kids is because we go in with that expectation of what writing should look like, and this allowed us to figure out what does that look like before they're ready for that traditional writing. Um, we also really felt it was important for kids at all of the different levels to be able to orally share, or if they're non-verbal, demonstrate what they're trying to tell us. It brings back that, in that, the six critical skills, that intentionality for writing. Um, and a lot of kids use toys or, um, Play-Doh or different tools to help demonstrate what they're thinking and what they're trying to write and share with us. Um, and then through this progression, we now can able, we're able to celebrate what they are doing, but also identify that little nudge that Carrie mentioned to move them forward within their developmental level. Um, so one of our favorite little guys is, Renee's going to share about him.
Sure, this is one of my first graders. My name's Renee Gallagher, and I'm one of the first grade teachers. Um, at the end of his writing time, this is one of the pieces he generated. And so we were kind of looking into it and asking him what the intentionality behind the drawings are, what do the letters, the symbols that are on the page, what do those represent? And he, at that point, he really didn't have an answer for those questions. There was really no intentionality between, between what he was sharing on the paper and what he remembered his ideas were beforehand. He also showed a lot of frustration. He often would cry and say that he was not a writer and writing was just too hard. And so this is kind of where we started off at the beginning of the year.
And then, fast forward to, this is that same little guy, um, about a month and a half or two months after we did this training. Um, it was an all-about unit, and he knows all about golf carts, especially the ones that his parents own. Um, and so there's, the intentionality piece really comes in. First, you can see this kid is just learning letters and letter sounds, so the big four tires on that second, that middle page on the top, um, he started, like, he really wanted to sound out those words, write down what he heard, um, and then you can see he labeled him and his mom in the picture, um, and then the, my favorite part was the next page where he has a ten with it crossed out. I said, "Well, what does that mean?" He goes, "Ten people should not be on that golf cart." So he wrote the four with a check mark, like, "Yep, forfeit here," and that's, that's what should be there. Um, he also shared about how they have, um, there are bigger ones, bigger golf carts, and there are smaller golf carts, and the important part, I, according to him, is smaller ones have, um, like, a cover over them, whereas the bigger ones don't always, he, he said. I don't know if that's true or not. The next one was all about how golf carts should not crash at the same time, with cars, so they should stay off of the roads. And then that last page, we do a lot of like, rating, how do you, how do you think your reader would like this, or, you know, giving yourself like, a rating for your book. And he was like, "Oh, I know," and he drew those, those faces, and then at the bottom, that was his trying to say he got a ten, ten stars. So he's super, super, super excited about it, and we...
She's in the venue. Yeah, yeah. And then, um, when we came back from spring break, we did a little book-making mini-unit, and one of the activities was that we created wordless picture books, um, and as kind of a jump start for the realistic fiction unit that's coming up. And I challenged all the kids to write one of these books, maybe a genre they haven't tried before, and he said, "Oh, I'm an expert in that. If you need any help, come see me." And that was kind of that progression, of him seeing himself as a writer and knowing that he had those skills necessary in order to tell a story across pages.
Yeah, he definitely sees himself. He is the kid that's like, jumping out of mini-lesson, running to look for the pic, the wordless picture books that we use, and then promptly telling me if we are running low or how many more I need to make. He's like, he's all on it because he's got books to write.
So there are three videos attached. Tammy, do we have the opportunity to press, or should we just talk about them?
They go into, uh, Google, like, if you click on it. Yep. Oh, if I, sorry. No. Hmm. There we go. Yep, there we go.
What's that, Ellie? Adele, head. Where does Siegel in your story?
Right here.
Okay, show me. Oh, you're going to trace it. Now, Ellie, I have a question for you. Can you tell me what's on? In your first page of your story? Yep. Oh, what are you eating?
Water.
Water. Well, my goodness, so you're kind of showing waves. And that looks like the ocean, and what did you make right there, Ellie? The dark fish, what did you make right there, Ellie?
Shark.
A shark, and then this was the last thing you made, and that's what?
A dolphin.
Well, live where? Olive in the ocean. Oh, and you're going to add sea horse last. Awesome.
So that was, um, from, I'm a, um, five K teacher, that was from the beginning of the year, so if you walked into my classroom at Writer's Workshop, um, everyone was a writer, so it looked different. We had, um, kids with books who were writing online, um, we had kids who were, you know, just had single pages, we had kiddos that were playing with Play-Doh, that were, um, had different tools, that were maybe playing at a dollhouse. Um, so there was a variety of things, but at Writer's Workshop time, we saw ourselves as writers. Um, and then we'll show, there would be a video of her now as a writer and what that looks like, um, and how it's progressed. We can show the other, yeah.
The one on the right.
The one on the right. Yeah.
What's the H? What is the C H, Seth?
My...
What's this?
My...
What's this?
This.
It is.
Awesome.
So that's, that's her progression, um, and so she's writing books, she's, Matt putting letters, pictures are matching, and we, throughout the year, show several different mentor texts, so we do have wordless books. We have books with lots of text, we have books with a little text, and so we show them that those are writers, just like all of, all of them are. Um, and so, even though you walk in and like, "Well, why is that student playing?" Well, that's their way, you can see the middle one with a train. Um, she has the paper there, sometimes it's a single piece, sometimes it's a blank piece, um, sometimes it's, uh, multiple pages, so they all have different tools, um, different things that, so that we're all writing, and we all look like writers, and everyone shares, which is neat.
Thank you.
Yes, please. Now, what goes on in the truck? What do you have right there? Yeah, you're on the train. Yes, and do you need to draw range? Show me the car that drives the train. What vehicle are you using? Where's that? What is that called? A controller, so you're on the controller. And next to the top, so the train drives around the track, and then you drive the controller. Okay, now drive the train, show me. Show me how you control that, what's it doing? So that is our second student, uh, closer to the beginning of the year.
And, you know, looking at our writing progressions, it's really starting at just being able to tell an oral story. And if you're not able to, perhaps you're not, have a nonverbal student, you're maybe going to act it out, or use puppets, or use whatever you have around you in order to tell your story. So, that was our second student at the beginning of the year. Um, she did not see herself as a writer. She, uh, often refused to do any writing at all, so this was actually a vast improvement for her, that she was engaging with some toys with writing, and, um, that's something that Jen did a really wonderful job with the students, to get them, to draw them in, and really get them to start seeing themselves as readers. Um, today, now that student is able to sit down, um, and sound out, um, her words, and put together a five-page story with matching pictures. So, we've really seen a lot of tremendous success in 5K.
Yes. Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions?
When do they learn, sorry? When do they learn cursive?
Third grade. I think maybe in third grade. There's probably an expert in the room other than myself, but I believe so. Um, thank you for bearing with us with the videos. The students are the reason we're here, and it's important to see them doing what they're doing best. Um, listening to your voice and a loud speaker system isn't my favorite, though. Um, so our plan for continuing this work, um, this team attended, um, the Spring DWA sessions with the regular ed teams, and we shared lots of this work together, so we can continue cohesion within our school building. Um, we're continuing to revise the writing progression. There's regular ed teachers that are using it alongside of special ed teachers, and so we know that we are in a continued state of revision. Um, those critical elements that Katie talked about, we're continuing to track those at grade-level PLCs, and we would like to scale that work across the way. Um, our goal is that next year, that we can collaborate with the Horizon Special Ed Team and the principals over there, so we can continue alignment, 'cause once our second graders leave us, surely they're moving somewhere else, so we would like everybody to be on that same page.
Are you saying you don't have alignment now?
No, we definitely have alignment, and we have standards-based proficiency scales, so they were operating on a grade-level proficiency scale, but what they don't have yet is the new progression that we've created that will meet the needs of this, um, other students that maybe weren't represented on the proficiency scale yet. So, the curriculum is aligned, our current skills are, we just like them to have our new tool.
So, two years ago, you didn't have a progression? A writing progression?
Standards-based progressions, we did have. This is a skill-based progression that encompasses a few different learning styles, as well as, like, they talked about some art standards, and some other drawing standards, and things that emergent writers might need.
Thank you, and maybe, either Mike or you, what's the difference between an academic coach and instructional coach and a teacher?
Yeah, I can answer that, Mary. So, instructional coaches, academic coaches, uh, would be viewed the same, so we call them instructional coaches, and the role of instructional coaches are to help support teachers to grow in their practice, to have an impact on student learning in the classroom. So, ultimately, it's a coach for our teachers in the classroom.
Are they teachers?
All, all of them have been teachers, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Are they part of our, when we look at staffing, and we've got...
Yes.
They're counted as teachers?
Yes.
Okay, so we're at seven hundred and some?
Seven hundred what?
Teachers?
No, we're at two hundred.
Two hundred, thank you.
Yep.
Seven hundred total admin?
Seven hundred admin?
Yeah, across the three, the four schools.
Administrators?
No, no. Tot, non-student, right, total staff is roughly...
Total, total staff across the district is about four hundred and thirty, uh, staff members, but that's everything. That's custodians, that's secretaries, that's the whole, that's everybody.
Okay, and then roughly about half of that is teaching academics, is the academic?
Little over two hundred. I don't have the exact number, right, as, as actual teachers.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, guys.
Great presentation. I just want to thank you for your excellent work, uh, with our young writers, and to see the progress they're making from the start of the year to, like, forming, trying to form ideas, and then be able to represent their ideas, to writing, um, across the page and, and multiple-page stories, that's, I don't think people appreciate how much that takes to get those kids to advance that far. You know, s, uh, some, you know, I just don't think people realize how much it takes to make that kind of progress, so thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
And I, I just wanna say, I love that, um, you're creating an attitude adjustment for all of them, that will carry them so far, that if they never could see themselves as writers, and you can instill that in them at such a young age, it's a beautiful thing. Thank you.
Thanks so much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Are those for them?
We don't have enough, so we'll deliver.
Okay, okay.
All right, next we have comments from citizens. Tammy, do we have any?
We do have one comment.
All right, and it looks like we have a comment from Anna Tarian?
Come on down, Anna. Look at her representing the gear.
Sorry, I'm a little underdressed. I came from a workout, so...
No, that's what I'm right.
Um, good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Tarian, and I'm a senior here at Peewaaki High School, but only for a few more days, as I'm graduating. Tonight, I'm here to shout out a person that has been a blessing in my life this past year. I had the utmost honor to have Mr. Dukes as my mentor this whole year, first semester and second semester. I know, I was really lucky. All right, quick story time. When Ms. Plack told me who my mentor is, my initial thought in my head was, "Let's go," because now all I get to talk about is basketball. Mr. Dukes and I didn't just talk about basketball the whole time, sadly, but it's all right. Um, however, a couple days go by, and I open my computer on a Sunday, which is kind of shocking, right, as a senior, and I see an email that says, "I have a quiz" from Mr. Dukes. My initial thought was, "Oh, no, not a quiz. Let's just say quizzes aren't my kind of thing." Um, um, oh, sorry. Um, little did I know, taking this a quiz allowed Mr. Dukes and I to dig deeper into my leadership skills, and understand different aspects of why I am the leader I am today. Throughout this mentorship, not only did I learn a lot about Mr. Dukes, but I also learned how much Mr. Dukes loves the word "each." On average, I think Mr. Duke says the saying, "Opening the door to each child's future" at least three times a meeting." But in all seriousness, Mr. Dukes is a perfect example of how to live by that saying. Mr. Dukes has this drive and spark that is so contagious, not only for Peewaaki School District, but also for his personal life, too. This drive and spark that he has is truly something special that I look up to and strive to have each and every day. Mr. Dukes is more than just a mentor, he is a guide, a challenger, and a supporter. He doesn't just give answers, he asks the right questions that challenge me in ways I never thought were possible. He helps me navigate and encourages me to enter this next chapter of my life with positive mindset, which will allow me to always learn, and allow me to push through any obstacle. From the bottom of my heart, thank you, Mr. Dukes, for being my mentor, and for everything you do here at Peewaaki. You truly make Peewaaki such a special place, so thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
That's awesome, Anna. And we all are gonna have to be Michigan State fans now, too.
That's right.
Of course, yes.
We're all. Thank you so much.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Larry, for your mentorship to our students.
Yes, thank you. All right, next we have consent agenda. Uh, that does include our minutes from our April twenty-eighth regular meeting, uh, correspondence, which was included, and we're looking to accept policies fifty-four-hundred-point-zero-one, sixty-eight-hundred-zero-one, thirty-eight-hundred-zero-three, and thirty-one-hundred-point-zero-seven. Uh, they've all come before the board after going through committee, um, so I'm looking for a motion for the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Next, we'll move on to old business, and, um, we're, we're looking again at the twenty-twenty-five-twenty-six budget and staffing plan report.
Uh, so, at the last board meeting on April twenty-eighth, we presented the board with preliminary operating budget for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year, and, uh, tonight, at that, at that point on April twenty-eighth, we informed you that we'll be bringing this back on May nineteenth, and the board will have any, uh, have an opportunity to ask any questions they had, uh, centered around the development of that budget, or what was included in there. Couple of reminders I wanted to, to give to, to the board members as we present the, this preliminary budget again for approval. Uh, the budget is a plan for the upcoming year. Uh, several items still need to be finalized, which can have a significant impact on the amount of funding that we have. First one is that the state biennial budget is still under construction as we, as we meet here, uh, and there'll be a lot of, um, potential for influencing the funding that we have out of that, that development process. Second item that is still, uh, to be known, then, are three common ones, you, every year, the third Friday in September account, September count, which influences the amount of revenue that we have, uh, through the revenue limit calculation, again, third Friday in September. Uh, the October certification of our values for property in the community, along with the number of vulture students that we have, and where they're, uh, they're attending, and the financial impact on that. And finally, October fifteenth, that certification of equalization aid for the year. The preliminary budget indicated a two-point-six percent increase in overall general fund expenditures, uh, projected for next year. The, um, overall financial, we're looking at a decrease in the tax levy for the, for the district is projected for next year, a small decrease. Uh, also a decrease in the property tax rate, as we estimate about two-point-seven percent, conservatively estimating the value, the change in value in property. Combine that with little, with a small decrease in the levy itself, and the tax rate will decrease about two-point-six-nine, two-point-seven percent for next year. The staffing plan, as was alluded to earlier, uh, shows a reduction of about point-eight overall positions in the district in order to balance that budget for the year, uh, and the budget also reflects all of the debt service that is associated with the referendum that was passed last April for the district. With that, are there any questions for the preliminary operating budget?
John, when we, uh, were last together, we, I asked about a, uh, line-by-line for the one million dollars over and above last year's budget, were we, were you able to? I didn't get it between, between then and now. Is it not forthcoming?
I, I will get you that, I will get you that prior to going to the, when we have the annual meeting, that'll be a piece of the information we'll pull together.
So, one of the questions I got from one of the constituencies, uh, based on your presentation, and the understanding that you're doing that because you're getting an additional million, so the question was, "Why aren't you looking at, or could you not look at setting that money aside, or, or using it to drill down the debt?"
So, the goal in developing the budget is to follow the strategic plan that the district has adopted, and allocate those resources to be able to achieve, to improve student achievement that we have in the district. When we allocate those resources, it means, uh, as best we can to retain the staff that we have, and to fairly compensate them, so can, we can recruit, attract, and retain the staff that we have. In this environment, our, our budget is heavily dictated by staffing positions, uh, by the cost of staffing positions. About seventy-eight percent of our operating budget is, is accounted for in salaries and benefits for those positions. So, as we balance, meeting those goals that are established for the district, and allocating the resources to be able to meet those goals, we want to maximize the opportunities we can create by utilizing the revenues that can be generated. Within that, we still have pretty significant variability that could happen here, uh, with the, through the legislative process. We learned that last time around, with what we projected, potentially was not going to be enough, uh, revenue generated out of the final biennial budget, that would allow us to be able to fund all the positions that we created in here. So, to say that we would create a budget where we had the opportunity for additional revenues, and it's not just revenues from the state, it's not just tax levy revenues that we're getting on here, it goes all the way back to decisions that were made by this board in January and February to, to open enrollment seats, the number of students that we're bringing in, to be able to fund the programs that we have in place. So, using that additional allowable resources to maximize the impact that we can to deliver, uh, to deliver on the educational promises that we have in the district, becomes the goal of the budget development process.
So, we had a budget this year, and the question was last year, uh, sorry, the question last meeting was, "Can you produce a budget that is flat-lined, and that you would have visible to the constituents exactly what it is you're gonna do in that one million that is more than you spent last year?" And if, when you prepare that, if you would do it in a way that, I can share that with folks, because I would want to do that, in a manner that is understandable to them?
Yeah.
So, line-by-line would mean there'd be no zero-zero school fund, there would be , uh, items like, "We need additional TVs, we're gonna spend it on X, Y," that kind of line item was what was requested, or that's what I requested, and that was what was echoed back to me from some constituents. So, if you could do that, uh, that would be much appreciated, John. Thank you.
Stace?
And I'll be, make the motion if no one else has any questions.
Yeah, is there any other questions from anyone? I don't think so. Go ahead, Stacy.
I move to approve the twenty-twenty-five-twenty-six budget and staffing plan as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oppose.
All right, next we have Business Affairs Committee that met earlier this evening, and I'm gonna have Stacy Newcomer treasure report out on that.
All right, uh, so, we did our normal review of the check register and the financial results. Um, our revenues right now, we're sitting at about sixty percent of budget, and our expenses are at about seventy-three percent, so that's normal, um, for the year, with the waiting for the, the funding to come in. Um, John pointed out a few things, um, I'll bring up, in particular, our self-funded insurance. Um, in April, we were a little high, uh, hopefully May will be a little lighter, um, and he is, um, looking at the possibility of having to expense another one hundred thousand dollars at year-end, um, for incurred but not reported healthcare expenses, um, but like he said, you know, maybe if May comes in a little lighter, we will be okay, but the way things are trending, if they continue, we may have to expense another hundred thousand there. Um, and then, John's gonna talk a little bit about capital projects, but our, our project that we were able to tour, um, it's very exciting to see some walls up. Um, the, financially, the expenditures paid was, we're lagging, um, our projected, um, expen, expenses, so we're, the timing of them is lagged about two-point-six million, which means that we are, income is a little bit higher because of the interest that we've been able to earn on our, um, money that's invested. So, we have about eighty thousand dollars of extra income above higher than projec, that's higher than projected. So, overall, we're doing all right.
On our, each month at the Business Affairs Committee, we review the capital projects, um, and update the committee on progress. So, the progress on those projects, Phase One, uh, which is the far south end of the complete project, is, uh, nearing the roofing stage right now, and starting to be, to work on the interior finishes. We anticipate by the end of July that that will be our, handed over to us as complete, uh, to, to finish what we need to from a furniture and fixtures and equipment, um, standpoint, to have it available to start the school year for the students to use. Uh, Phase Two, which is the art rooms, the innovation center, the construction, the manufacturing, and those associated spaces, uh, we anticipate end of December to be ours, and again, uh, used for the furniture, fixtures, and equipment, make it instruction-ready, so that by the start of the new year, we'll be able to use those spaces. Phase Three, Four, and Five are a lot smaller in scope in this project, uh, and we anticipate those being in January and February completed, and then, uh, significant amount of work in the summer of twenty-twenty-six, when we're out of session. Uh, we also talked about the capital improvement plan for the summer. The capital improvement plan for the summer is to complete the referendum projects on time and within budget, as we've planned, uh, throughout the year. Uh, in the budget document, we did not identify any specific items that would be accomplished this upcoming summer, from a capital project standpoint, uh, because we've got plenty going on with the, uh, scope of the construction work. Any questions?
All right, if we don't have any other questions, I will take a motion.
Motion to accept the Business Affairs Report as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oppose. And question, kind of a point of order. We have two presentations that go on in the Business Committee, and the question would be if we could move them to the regular meetings. The first one would be the nursing report, and the second one would be the food service report.
So part of the function of the Business Affairs Committee that, that traditionally has been put together in preparation of building the capacity for understanding the budget, understanding the components, those auxiliary services that go into the non-instructional program, is to give a report for each one of those auxiliary services of the largest ones that we have in the district. Nursing services is a significant amount of staffing and a high level of service that we provide in the district. So we give that to the Business Affairs Committee as a report with the nurses coming in, unlike the focus of the board meeting is those, the learning, the, the learning like you saw tonight, teaching and learning components, and then the administrative tasks, those other presentations that are given to the board. We keep the auxiliary services in the Business Affairs because it all fits under the business functions of the district. That was the intent on those. Each month, there's a presentation. So summer capital projects is this month. As we get to the fall, we look at nursing services. In February, we, we look at the hiring prospects. What do we anticipate for positions and for the number of applicants that we should see and build the sequence up to the budget adoption at this meeting in May.
The information you present in those, that those people present is unique to those people, and except for the three board, three community members, nobody else sees that. I think that should be much more widely known. And I, there's no reason that it has to be in the Business Committee meeting. It has, that's what we say. That's what the board says. The board can put it wherever it wants. So I would just have that as a request going forward, that those people speak here to all of us at once, not through a filter of the Business Committee, and same with the food service. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next up, new business, education for employment. And I'm going to ask Adriana Black, our continuous improvement coordinator, to come up and speak to that.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
So the Education for Employment Plan is a report that is created on an annual basis. It is driven by state statute that we create this report, and it really captures the work that is done K-12 at the district level to connect students with learning opportunities either at a post-secondary level or through business and community partnerships. And so that report is usually written as a draft in about March. In about April into May, that report is presented then to an advisory board. That advisory board consists of representatives from the community, higher education, and some local community members, mentors, for example, that are involved. We get feedback from those members. That is not part of the state statute. We just consider that to be best practice with this particular report, so that's just a piece that we do every year. And then the report itself comes to you with an ask that you approve that at the board level. Once board approval is reached on a plan, then that goes to our local CISA. They have to review it, at which time it is submitted to the state, and that needs to be posted on our school district website by July 1st. So you all have that report with you. If you have any particular questions or anything like that, I'm happy to answer those questions.
Very thorough report, Adriana. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions from anyone? You did so great. We have no questions, Adriana.
You do this every year?
Yes.
And we, it's, the deadline is always the same?
At this time, the July 1 deadline is the same. That would be up to the state to change it, but it has not changed for the last several years.
I move to approve the 2025-26 Peewaki School District Education for Employment Plan.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm saying.
Next, consideration of acceptance of the incoming open enrollment students for the 25-26 school year. I'm going to turn this over to Mike and John.
John, you want to, you want to take the lead on this one?
Yes. So as we talked about earlier, open enrollment, the, the number of seats are determined in January based on a count of occupied seats that we conduct in December. We determine where do we have the flexibility to add students within the district, within the district based on our projected enrollments. And this is a monumental task with the amount of data and sharing and collecting of applications that Tammy does an excellent job with as we keep moving forward with this process. This year, we had, we had 37 seats open. We received 155 applications for those 37 seats, and 145 of those are for students who are new to the district. So if a student is currently attending in the district, family moves out, they apply for open enrollment, they already would have occupied a seat in December, so they don't need the seat available to be able to attend through open enrollment in the fall. That's why there's a difference between the total number of applications and the number of new student applications. Very consistent with, with where these applications come from. Our largest two are from Milwaukee and from Waukesha School District for resident students who are, are looking to attend the district here. Overall, we had, of those new student applications, 30 of those were for siblings of currently attending students in the district to enter into the district. And a majority of that 30 were, were K-4 students that want to enter the district who had older siblings who were already attending here. There were 13 students who were in that tuition waiver category who will get in through open enrollment because they already were residents and attending here at some point during this previous school year. The other side of the open enrollment is the outgoing open enrollment applications. This year, we had 39 students who applied to attend elsewhere from the district. In many cases, and in most of those cases, all but eight of them, these students are not currently attending the district. So families may have moved into the district, became residents and wish to continue their education in their previous district by attending there. So they need to open enroll from Peewaki to continue to attend in that, in that other district. So only eight students who were part of the program, and that's very consistent year over year, very small number of students applying to leave from the district once they've been in attendance here. You have three motions that we would look at for, sorry, two motions that we look at for this. First is to accept the total of 49 open enrollment students. It's the seats plus the tuition waiver students that are here. And then the second one is to create wait lists. So in 4K this year, it was our highest number of applications. We had 20 seats available. We had 51 applications in 4K. So we have 31 students that are on the waitlist there. The waitlist for 5K is 14 students, three students at grade two, and we had one student that would be denied because of a closed program based on the action in January. And then also one open enrollment seat for grade four and waitlist seven students at grade five. Any questions about open enrollment?
I have one, John. Could you clarify the siblings that are trying to get into 4K with the numbers? Did they, were they, all the siblings able to get in?
Yes. Our board policy gives preference to any siblings for available seats, and we had 20 seats available for 4K that we had opened for the year, and we had 19 siblings who applied for those 20 seats.
So, John, with these open enrollments, where do we sit then with student count? You know, because I know we've been going down. So where do we sit with these open enrollments?
Great question. We look at, through that opening, through the seats that are open, trying to balance that number out. We were at 249 students this year on the second Friday in January count. We're anticipating 259 next year. There's a lot of variability that happens between now and September, the third Friday in September when the count is taken. We have students who are currently in open enrollment who move out. We have 31 graduating seniors that are in open enrollment right now that we're replacing of those 37 seats that are available for, or 36 seats available for new students. So overall, we anticipate a net increase of about 10 students to our open enrollment population.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Two motions here. Can I get a motion to move to accept 49 open enrollment students, 36 seats plus 13 tuition waiver students?
So moved. Oh, sorry, Larry. Bring it to it.
I can go with it. Okay. So I move to, to accept 49 open enrollment students, 36 seats plus 13 tuition waiver students. Do we take that motion first, right?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And can I get that longer motion?
Sure. Move to create a wait list for 31 students at 4K, a wait list for 14 students at 5K, wait list three students at grade two and deny one student due to the program they applied for being closed in parentheses, special education. There is one open enrollment seat available at grade four and a wait list for seven students at grade five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Question on tuition waiver? What is that?
So in the statute, there's a provision that if a student begins a school year in the district as a resident student and they subsequently move, they have the ability to maintain resident status to complete that year or to get one opportunity to apply for open enrollment to be able to attend after that. So it's a statutory provision that gives them resident status even though they may have moved out during the year into, into another location, another district.
Okay. What is the tuition being waived?
It's a, if a student moved out of the district without this provision and they wanted to stay, they would be required to pay tuition to the district. Tuition has basically been established at what the open enrollment dollar figure is, so about $9,600 per year is what that family would have to pay in order for their student to complete the year in the same district that they started if that tuition waiver provision wasn't there.
But they don't pay that as an open enrollment student?
Non-resident students would have to pay tuition in order to attend our district unless they are enrolled through open, public school open enrollment.
Who sets the tuition?
It's set at statewide average cost is what sets the open enrollment amount.
For, so it's the same for Peewaki as it is for Milwaukee as it is for Brown?
Correct.
Which is 9,600?
Roughly, yes.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Well, John, it's you again. Next, we're going to speak to potential capital improvements.
Did we, did we pass this one?
Yeah.
We did.
Yeah, we did.
Okay. All right. Just making sure.
So I wanted to put, sorry. And this one, we wanted, John and I, put together a couple of slides just to give you a picture where we're, of what we're, what we're looking at moving forward and looking to get the approval to move forward with. So in the, in the referendum that was passed in April of 2024, the line here, we talk about other capital projects that are identified in the, in the long-range capital improvement plan, that long-term capital improvement plan for the district. We do this because we do have, and the board is well aware of this, in December each year, we present you with a long-term capital projects plan of those items that are going to need to be addressed in the next three to five to 10 years, and we give you a scope of what's on the horizon so you know what we're going to have to invest in. As we talked about the referendum, one of those processes that we've historically had in the district here is to use proceeds of what we have from investment earnings or where we are able to build efficiencies. Remember, in the referendum process, you're going to, you're developing the question on a conceptual design. It's a thought. It's the idea of what could this thing look like? You develop the question based on cost estimates of that. A ton of work goes in after that time to get it down to the actual bid documents, and we gave updates throughout the process to the board of how that design became more and more finite through that funnel to what we're actually building out here right now. In that process, you're able to generate some savings. When we adopt, when we passed the resolution or when we passed the GMP amendment in February this past year, that number was smaller than what we had originally projected in the referendum. So we look at what are some of those capital projects that are a need that we know we're going to have to do. Throughout the process, we talked about the potential of the football field. We know that that turf has to be replaced, and well, John will give you some more information on where that's at. We know that the, the track needs a update that, to update, to prolong the life of that structure that's there. And we also have a third project, which is improving the learning environments at Horizon Elementary to match that experience. Some of what you saw today, tonight, happening at PLE, the structure, the facility does not lend itself to delivering that same kind of large group work and the, the large learning spaces that can augment the instructional process. So we talk about two phases when it comes to this long-term capital projects plan. The first phase are the three projects that we're going to talk about after this. These are ones that have longer lead time and there's significant advantages. We adopted Horizon. We'll have, receive new flooring in the summer of 2026. We can leverage the contractors on site, along with the contractors that are finishing up other work up here, to improve the efficiency of doing this other project at Horizon in conjunction with completion of the major referendum project. Phase Two comes in January. We're thinking, we'll come back to the board and talk about another scope of projects based on now 95% plus finished with all of the preliminary, all of the other work on the capital improvements and having a real clear picture of where we're going to finish the projects out. In 2019, in 2018-19, that construction process, in 2022, we closed out the previous referendum project and we added about $700,000. We returned it to the debt service fund because we had accomplished all of the goals of the project. We returned that to the debt service fund to, to, about $700,000 that used to pay down principal and interest payments on the outstanding debt from that referendum. Those are ones that you're, you're going to be looking at, that Phase Two, those projects in the next three to five years. They are, are projects that are right on the horizon. You're going to be looking at them by issuing some kind of debt, whether that is through a non-referendum debt or through a referendum debt. Those are items that will stop, will, will prevent the district from having to use any kind of, or to incur any kind of deferred maintenance on some of those projects. So I wanted to do is give you an idea of what these three projects are by getting out early in the cycle, getting out ahead of the rest of the competition, who's going to be looking at these same contractors. We believe we can have a significant decrease in the price and the cost of what these projects will be for the summer of 2026.
Can I ask you a question, John, before you? Before we get too far? Did you say that the 2018 referendum has been, what is the status of the 2018 referendum?
The projects were closed out in, I believe it was February of 2022. We took action at the board level to close those projects out, meaning all the work was done, any funds that were remaining were rolled into the debt service fund to reduce future debt service payments.
What is the amount of debt associated with the 2018 referendum still outstanding? It's not zero?
No.
Okay. That, that answers that. And just so I understand what you've just been saying to us, you're proposing, we've got one referendum out that's not yet paid for, we're working on another, we've got a second referendum that was just last year's, and this is a third possible referendum, so it, it?
No.
It's possible in the near future we'll have three referendums?
No.
Bang down?
No, that's not what I said. What I said was, you had the two referendums that are previously approved, looking at the state of school finance in the, in the, in Wisconsin, in previous, in, back from 2018- two thousand eight to two thousand fourteen, as we were growing as a district, we were able to put money away to address capital projects through our capital improvement funds, Fund Forty-One and Fund Forty-Six. That flexibility is no longer there if we want to continue delivering the educational program that we have in the district. In order to do capital projects, you have two ways of doing it. The board has the authority to issue up to one million dollars of non-referendum debt at any point in time, but payments for that debt are all within the revenue limit that you have, which means you have to take funding away from the instructional program to make those debt service payments within your revenue limit. The second opportunity for getting additional funding to accomplish those things is through a referendum. So looking down the road in the future, that may be the tool that the district has to use to complete referent, or to complete capital projects to prevent deferred maintenance would be going to the community and looking for that additional funding, nowhere near the amounts that we're looking at that we've had in the previous two referendum because we've been so proactive about taking care of the facilities.
Thank you.
All right, I'm just going to provide some details here on artificial turf and the track. So as far as the artificial turf goes, we are well beyond its life cycle. So a typical life cycle artificial turf is roughly eight to ten years. If you're down south, when the UV hits it year-round, it's closer to eight. If you do proper preventive maintenance, you take care of your turf, you rotate your play, you know, it's, the team warms up in different spots, they don't, you know, the linemen don't warm up in the exact same spot everywhere and, you know, wear down the turf in that particular area. So we put over, easily over seven thousand hours of play on that turf right now. So by the end of its life cycle, it's going to be right around over seventy-five hundred hours. It was installed in twenty thirteen and now, actually, we have the oldest turf field in the state. So Whitney's, they installed theirs the year before us and they will be replacing theirs this summer. Green Bay Nord aim replaced, is replacing theirs right now and it's the exact same turf type and model that we have on our field. And the, just from the safety aspect of it, it is still safe, it still is underneath the synthetic turf consoles G max rating scale, so we are still under that threshold. However, it's getting to the point where, all right, we're going to need to replace it. The HIC testing is a newer standard that is a little more stringent. It also looks at adding a shock pad underneath the turf field just to increase the safety aspect of the turf fields. The shock pads are not mandatory by any means, however, they become very common over the last couple of years of new turf insulation. So something we're going to have to look at whether we add a shock pad or not underneath our new turf field. But again, our turf field is getting towards the end of its life cycle and, you know, we will need to replace it here in the very near future. And then as far as the track goes, so this track, the Bynon track was installed back in twenty thirteen, right after the turf was. So and then, so the base mat was a black base mat and then there's a structural spray added in twenty eighteen, which is the red that you see currently over that. And you get a five, you get a four to six years usually out of every structural spray. So again, we're kind of coming up on that six, seven-year cycle of, we're going to need additional structural spray on that turf. You can see the shadowing through of the black from the base mat. The newer, the newer product and the newer structural spray doesn't require us to plastic off twenty feet in every direction, which we had to do when we applied the structural spray back in twenty eighteen. But applying a new structural spray and then filling a couple of the small cracks that we have in the turf material itself will easily make that last another four to six years again until we have to look at doing something more on the track. And again, this is just kind of a life cycle thing of it's common and like you can see, you can see all the, the black bleeding through quite heavily, especially on the visiting sideline, the east side, and then a little bit also on the west side in front of the home bleachers. But again, that's just, that's just simple wear and tear and commonplace for the turf types that we have, or sorry, the track type that we have. Any questions on turf or track? Yeah?
Obviously, one, congratulations for having it extend that long, but is there anything else that you do or, I mean, that helps maintain it for that length of time? It's just, that's a long time to have a.
Yeah, and well, for both, so like the turf, you know, there's, there's proper preventative maintenance, there's a machine, there's a magnet. Also typically, there's like a full sports champ cleaning, so it like grooms it, makes sure all the fibers are sticking up, makes sure there's proper infill. You know, over the first, ooh, probably four or five years, you know, there's one big, you know, ton bag of the pellets and we replenish, you replenish all the kick areas. You know, our, our maintenance and grounds crew replenishes that throughout the field. Some, yes, migrates off, some of it goes in shoes as far as it goes, but again, you're trying to make sure the infill is evenly spread throughout the entire field so the turf fibers are sticking up and they're, they're doing what they're supposed to. As far as the track goes, not a whole lot, it's just protecting it, making sure we're not putting bikes on there, trying to keep dogs off of there. Typically, from a track standpoint, as long as you're not driving heavy vehicles over it, you're not doing crazy twists and turns. You know, if you have a lot of weight and it, you know, you make sharp turns, then you could damage the turf, but ultimately it's just taking care of it. Our track coaches or football coaches or other sports coaches that have used the turf have, you know, again, they reported, you know, I got a text like, hey, we have a seam or a tear, you know, we try to address it and take care of it as soon as we can. But again, that's, that's everyone's responsibility to help with making sure we're keeping top-notch facilities.
Well, probably, I mean, jumping on any kind of a little tear in it, I mean, because those would spread.
Yeah, well, and like say, the Pirate, for example, there's a lot of small cuts. So like those seams typically, you know, have come up two or three times over twelve years just because of, you know, wear and tear twists and turns of, of cleats, so it's common. But yeah, you have to just jump on and take care of it so it doesn't become a larger issue.
John, that shock pad?
Yeah.
Is that what it kind of sounds like? Is it there to help prevent injuries, less concussions, things like that?
Yes. Well, it helps keep the field flush with existing curb and then also, yeah, so the, the safety aspect of it, so like your HIC testings, which is head injury criterion, your HIC testing will come, will be much better. It does increase the safety of the turf by adding a shock pad underneath. And I have some more, like it's, again, it's just more of a stringent test with the HIC testing, but those, the Brock, Brock pad is one example of a shock pad that people are putting in just to make them safer. The, the elevation of it, like the turf that we have is like two and a half inches, it would go down to two and there would be a half an inch shock pad underneath there should we choose to do that route.
Yeah, and these are, these are good examples of when you look at this, the base mat on that track was a significant investment when we put it in, we were able to prolong the life of it by putting the structural spray. We're still, it's in good condition, yet we're able to prolong that again through proper preventative maintenance and by doing this smaller investment without having to replace the entire track surface. The third project that we identified here, looking into next, into the summer of twenty twenty-six involves Horizon Elementary School, like I mentioned earlier. At Horizon, as a part of the administrative team leadership week one year, we took a book storage room and tried to replicate a Maker space in there so that we can integrate the steam concepts like our, throughout the rest of the buildings. I always think of Horizon as the new building because that was built in two thousand, it was our newest building for a long time. It's our oldest building right now and the, twenty years ago, the instructional delivery was different and the needs of a structure were different twenty-four years, twenty-five years ago now than they are today. So this will modernize a little bit, the, the delivery within the footprint of what we have in that building. First, what you can see here is in this picture, the top right side of that image is two classrooms that are within the building there and those would be combined. We've done this before in other segments of the building where we've taken a wall out to make a larger learning space. It gives the ability for two teams, two, two classes to collaborate for a full staff meeting to be able to have a collaborative space and a, and a joint learning space, much like at PLE where the Maker space was two combined classrooms that were created. On the lower half of it, the shaded one there is an image that would give us a new Maker space, larger, about fifty percent larger than the existing one that's in there, and I'll show you the three D image of that, also with better visibility so that we can see, it can be supervised from the library so students can work in the Maker space while they may be reading or working on other items within the library and creating a better learning environment for those steam activities and the integration of those components into that, into that building. Again, they are across from each other, so now you have the opportunity to share spaces, showcase spaces that are.
Yeah, a couple of comments on this design, something that we've been talking about. Horizon, one of the, so if you think about the other buildings and some of the modernization, this is, space is a perfect example, creating a more modern collaborative area where you can work flexibly. That really, and you can see it in PLE where the large Maker spaces, then you have kind of the larger learning commons area right outside of that, which is where we're going to start having board meetings here, starting with the meetings in June as we don't have any air conditioning here in the summer. Obviously, you have spaces like this at the high school, you have spaces like that throughout Asa Clark with the renovation that happened in twenty twenty. Horizon is the one building that really has nothing like that. There's really no place outside of the cafeteria to try to have a staff meeting, it's not a good place for presentation. And we often talk about that building, it seems very isolated. You have distinct grade level hallways stacked and like you walk through that building during the day and sometimes it feels like no one's there because they're all pushed down these hallways. There's no kind of downtown in terms of the, the personality of that school. So this kind of takes the existing library Maker space, opens it up, there's some glass features installed here to make the visibility there juxtaposed across the hallway from that larger space, larger group space with the two classrooms that we're talking about. And that would be right in the center of the building, it would be more of a hub of activity that we think would be impactful for that school. So a little bit of some of the thought process around this as well as the need to update and modernize things like flooring and those kinds of things in that building that are very dated.
That's it. Any questions?
The solar panels, are those going on?
Yes, that's also a summer twenty twenty-six project.
And that's part of the referendum?
Yes.
How much of that is federal dollars maintenance-wise and current, and installation? I think, Mike, you mentioned something about.
So one of the opportunities that we have to offset some of the cost on that install is through federal funding from the Infrastructure Act or from the Inflation Reduction Act. Those numbers, that is determined after the project is done. You have to complete the project, then you submit the application to get that. We're working through right now, so the selection process for an engineering firm to help us to, to design that system to operate as efficiently as possible and have some instructional components to it that we can share, that we can use with the student population. We'll be able to have a much better answer for you once we bid that out. And again, the timeline for bidding that is probably September, September, October for the summer install.
So that's, that particular item is going to show up on these long-term capital needs in appropriate order?
That item was already included in the original, so that's one of the core projects from the referendum, so that was already included.
I'm talking about maintenance?
Maintenance of?
The, that system.
Oh, the solar installation once it's installed?
Correct. It's going to be a.
It'll become an operating cost. Maintenance of that will be a regular operating cost of the district.
And if the Inflation Reduction Act is repealed, where are we, where are we with that? Where do we end up?
The, the amount of dollars that was earmarked in the referendum process was about six, I want to say six hundred and sixty thousand dollars for that solar project. We would look at the size of array, the size of the array to be able to utilize what we had approved if we did not have additional funding to offset the cost.
Okay. And what, what was the field made of prior to two thousand thirteen?
Grass, the main stadium field?
Correct.
It was grass.
It was grass.
It was natural grass. And we easily, from, like, I have pretty good data on the amount of usage, so we use the turf six to seven times more often now by having artificial turf than we did when we had natural grass on that field.
Why, what are you, what are you doing that would increase that usage?
Well, you just have a more consistent playing surface where, all right, it doesn't get beat up, if it rains, we can still play on it. And then there's just more usage because more teams are able to get on it where if it was just solely a grass stadium field, well, we have to protect it in order to keep it, you know, quality enough for competition. So you can have more competitions on it, we can have a lot more usage on it because the, it's consistent playing surface across the board.
It's used for football?
Yes, used for multiple sports, not just football.
It's used for multiple activities. We did an extensive amount of research back in twenty eleven and twenty twelve on what the utilization of the field was, what it could accomplish or what it could accommodate and still be safe to play on as a turf field and maintain. And we combine all those costs with that ongoing maintenance cost of putting in a artificial surface in there. And long-term, we come out ahead over that twelve to fourteen years, you come out ahead on the cost of having this artificial surface versus having a grass surface to maintain.
That was going to be my question, what was the cost in two thousand twelve and what is the cost of this project? And exactly what, I don't get too far ahead of you, last question. What are the additional things you're using that for besides football?
So the, the cost of the project, the, the cost of the project, so the track needed, the track was at a point of having to be replaced. All the substrate was cracked and everything else, so that all had to be replaced. That was a cost of the project. The drainage on the field was a cost of the project. The turf, the grass, the artificial surface itself was a cost of the project. I don't have the individual numbers, I don't remember them.
So, so what I was asking, John, was the distinction between the cost of the actual grass and the cost of the turf, just those two numbers?
Well, I could easily say the, the cost to maintain a, just a one stadium, grass field is easily thirty to forty thousand dollars annually just to, you name it, mow it, fertilize it, water it, take care of it, stripe it, everything like that. So it's about thirty to forty thousand dollars annually to maintain a grass, grass stadium field. And as far as usage, everybody's using it. So FIAH's out there regularly, soccer uses it typically every spring, they're on there until the grass field is ready. Just given the nature of our climate in the, in the Midwest, bands out there, you know, we have multiple other sports. So baseball practices on, has practice on there in the spring sometimes. We have lacrosse on there for a while, too.
They practice on it, they couldn't practice on it previously because they'd tear it up. And then you have.
Right, we were, that was our boatin' when we were younger.
Yeah, right, you could never.
You're not in football, you're not on this field.
Yeah, you're not practicing it. And the youth football, so we have, we have youth football, all these different grade levels, who couldn't play their games on there, who now all play their games in there.
Yeah, usually every weekend, they're, they're pretty much using, using it for youth football in the fall, too, so.
What's the maintenance cost of the turf? The numbers I would go with the thirty to forty thousand?
I would, you know, between, between staffing and material, maybe a few grand a year at most. I mean, I would say probably five grand, five grand a year at most. And typically, majority of that cost is actually that, that sports champ machine of having the company come back and do that as part of the warranty. So I'd say maybe five thousand dollars on the top end, but typically, you know, it's just, it's a lot less maintenance to maintain a turf field than it is a grass, grass field.
And did you have a number for the installation of the turf?
The.
This year?
For a new turf?
The other one, thank you.
For a new turf field, any, it's right around five hundred, I mean, for projected costs, I'd say it's probably right around five hundred thousand for a new turf field, but that is strictly the, like, carpeting, like, it's easier to just classify.
The turf itself, right?
Yeah, like the turf itself. So like everything else underneath, the subgrade, the, all that stays exactly the same. We would be looking at, all right, the, the turf itself, the two and a half inches of fiber, all the infill will come up, that whole turf product would be changed out, we possibly had a shock pad and then a new turf material on top of that. So probably right around five hundred thousand dollars is projected cost. And then I know, I've seen the pricing of the shock pads are anywhere from eighty to a hundred thousand right now, that's what I'm, I've been seeing.
So the five hundred thousand only gets me the top?
I would, I would say the five hundred includes the shock pad right now from a projected cost standpoint, and we'll have a better idea when that gets bid out to exactly see where the market's sitting on that. The nice thing about that particular product, all those turf products are made down in Georgia, so they're made, they're made in the United States, too, so. So we expect the, that cost to be probably right around $500,000, shock pad and turf.
Whereas to your question about the original project, the infrastructure had to be created, the sub-material, the drainage, all that, so it was, it was much more expensive, expensive for the original project, but now it's replacing the surface, not building the whole thing.
Yeah, and then we have 130,000 budgeted or projected cost for the, the track structural spray. So like originally, when we replaced it in 2013, we had to replace the entire track, all the tech, the, the, the track had to be completely removed, repaved, and then there's a new track material that goes on top of the new asphalt. And then like, and like Mike was saying, where there, for the turf, it, it all had to be excavated, there was a lot, a whole crazy herringbone, herringbone design of drainage that had to be installed on that field with a tremendous amount of stone in order to make sure you stop the drainage for any turf type. So I couldn't tell you the, the amount right offhand for what that, that project cost.
Thanks.
Motion? Okay. I'll think of the right one here. Move to approve the administration to proceed with the completion of the turf replacement project, track resurfacing, and the Horizon Elementary Learning Spaces projects identified in the Long-Term Capital Improvement Plan. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oppose.
I do just-
And if you would note, Larry, the opposition is worth $33 trillion in debt. Thank you.
I, I do have one quick question. Were those capital improvements, did that in, include any talk of adding to that parking lot that services the administrative building? And did we get approval from the village for that?
There's two, so the Phase Two, one of the items identified is to expand the parking lot that is at the district office. The approval that would be needed first would be for rezoning of that property. We have not approached that yet, we anticipate doing that over the summer or early fall, the rezoning process, so that it, it is zoned contiguous, or the same as the rest of the campus, as institutional. And then the project would have to be proposed from there.
Thank you.
So we'd be looking at that more-
Summer of 26.
Summer of 26. So we'd come back to you for that, for that particular project.
Okay.
By that time, and of course with these ones that you just approved, we'll have actual costs, we'll, you know, so then we'll know for sure where we're standing as well.
Okay. Next, we have consideration and possible approval of the budget amendment for the 24-25 operating budget. John?
So traditionally, we, we bring the board a, a budget amendment in May of the year. We're, we'll look at some of those areas where we received either significant revenue greater than we anticipated, or our cost came in different than what we had anticipated in the original budget back in the fall. This year, the general fund and Fund 27, the operating budgets combined, the, the amendment would increase the amount of revenue that we have, and it primarily reflects two areas. One of them was in common school funds, the funding level that we received was significantly higher than what we had projected. We try to be conservative on that because you don't want to overspend when you don't find out what you're going to get until February of the year. So we're conservative on our estimate of revenue and expenses, now we need to make the adjustment because you have to utilize everything that you get, or it reduces next year's amount. That accounted for about 62,000 of the 126,000 in the total adjustment of revenues and expenses. The other significant one is on the revenue side. We had a lot of the old equipment from the 1960s that was part of the construction trades in that. We took to auction and were able to have bidders awarded to purchase those items, which we received almost $40,000 in additional revenue beyond what was anticipated in the general fund for that. So that additional revenue is then offsetting some of those expenditure areas where we, expenses came in higher than anticipated during the year. So the general fund increases by $126,000, 20, 126,418 exactly. Fund 21, the special projects fund, is our students, student activity accounts, those are activity accounts. We build a projected original budget on that where we anticipate things are going to fall. The amendment takes it to what actually happened. So one group may have fundraised significantly more than they originally projected, generating additional revenue and expenses that they're, they're covering with that for their group activities. So this amendment adjusts both the revenues and expenses to get where, to reflect what our actual performance was through the year. Our debt service fund, we talked about the two issues for this latest referendum, the first one was $9 million, the second one that we just finished last meeting, or closed on May 7th, was for the 19.5 million. Each of those carried a premium, where in order to reduce the interest rate, the purchaser sent us a premium, we need to record that revenue. So the amendment adjusts the budget to reflect that revenue being received that will then be used to make the debt service payments in subsequent years. And then finally, in the construction funds, Fund 41 and Fund 46, Fund 41 has really been our emergency fund that we have. So this year, we planned two projects at, in the summer of 2024 that were completed using that capital improvement fund, that Fund 41. We had two projects during the year. We had a, the boiler system that services this building, we had a emergency repair on the exhaust system that we had about $17,500 worth of work that was completed, we drew that from Fund 41. We also had the last expense for completing the field project behind Asa, was that installation of batting cage and the new batting cage that would go over that as the final cost of that project. So the amendment increases the expenditures in that Fund 41. It also is reflective of the revenues that we're receiving from the funds that are invested in Fund 41 and Fund 46. The budget amendment process changes the original budget for the district. You, in your packet, you have the publication, so upon adoption of the budget amendment, we will, we have 10 days from the date of adoption to publish the change in the original budget, we'll get that out in the official paper, and then make the change and report that to the state.
What's the official paper?
The Wachshau Freeman.
I thought we didn't do that anymore.
It's for noticing meetings.
Yeah.
Correct, I thought we decided we weren't going to do that anymore last year.
That's for noticing meetings, the statute still says-
Oh, that's what you're saying, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, then what is, what is, this notice is falling under what category?
Statute 65.9, sub 5, sub A, which requires a class one notification, it's publication in the, in the official paper.
Thank you. How many of those do we do a year?
We're required to have a class one notice prior to the annual meeting, so that budget is published for the community in that, in the same format. The original budget is adopted in October and is required to be published upon that, that adoption, and then when we amend it. You could amend the budget every month if you wanted to, we do it just in May and process it.
Three?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions for John?
I move to approve the budget amendment dated May 19th, 2025, for the fiscal year ending on June 30th, 2025.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Epstein.
Moving along to personnel issues, we do have three employments, Mike.
We also have one resignation as well, and I see in the paper agenda it says there's none, but there is one. So resignation of Haley Spahn, fourth grade teacher at Horizon, due to a family move. So I'd seek your approval of her resignation.
Move to accept the resignation of Haley Spahn, S-P-L-A-N.
Second?
Is presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
There's no retirements, and there are three employments. Things have been going well with hires here. Principals and Colin Beduna, nice job. So I recommend the approval of Julia Steinkie, FIAED teacher at Peewaki Lake Elementary, she'd be replacing Ciara Gill. Lauren Profetto, ELA teacher at Asa Clark, replacing Vicki Whalen, who's retiring, and Riley Tutteberg, special ed teacher, Asa Clark, replacing Amy Tosin.
Would you say so moved?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Epstein.
And there are no leaves.
Okay. Moving on, review of upcoming activities. Well, Saturday, May 31st, at 1:00 PM is the high school graduation ceremony in the gym. Although, John, you did say something about potentially outside? Or no?
No, we're not going to be outside.
No?
We will be inside. Asa Clark does promotion outside typically.
Yeah. And that will be Stacy, Larry, Matt, and myself that are attending and handing out diplomas. Thank you, guys.
And I do have diplomas, Matt and Brenda sign. I'll get them signed and then get them out to you guys for-
Yep.
Because I don't have to hand them out, that's, I don't want to answer that.
Okay.
You can scratch my name from the handing out piece, so.
Okay. And then Thursday, June 5th, is the Asa Clark Middle School Promotion. That is at 6:00 PM on the high school football field, and Matt will be joining me. Then Friday, June 6th, is the end of the year celebration. The flyer was included. The lunch starts in the high school cafeteria at 11:15, and Clayton always does a great job with that, followed by a recognition program at 12:45 in the auditorium, just to recognize those individuals that are retiring. Monday, June 9th, is Business Affairs at 6:00, followed by the Board meeting at 7:00. Monday, June 23rd, is Policy Committee meeting that was going to be at 6:00 PM, but we're now moving that to the July 14th meeting, correct, Ashley? Okay. So that will just be the Board meeting at 7:00 PM. June 23rd, I spoke to that. Monday, July 14th, Business Affairs at 6:00 PM, Board meeting at 7:00. I think that covers it. All right.
Bren, excuse me, Tammy, you can put me down for the Asa promotion.
Question on the schedule?
Mm-hmm.
Which was brought to my attention. Safety meeting was listed under the board meeting, board meetings on the board page, Safety Committee meeting?
Safety committees are published as open meetings, but they're not a board committee or a board meeting. John runs the Safety Committee, but we do post that as a, as a public meeting.
Well, it's under this, on the far right there, Mike.
Okay, I'll take a look and see how it's posted.
Says board, upcoming board meetings.
And the Safety's Committee's listed like that. I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, and then, and then one right after that was this meeting.
Okay.
So it was definitely looking like-
Yeah, we don't want to confuse anybody, Mary, so thank you, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Board of Education Committee selections, and every year for our Board Policy 7100.02, we appoint committee members. After speaking with everyone, we are going to keep the committees the same this year as we did last year. So Business Affairs will be Stacy, Matt, and Travis, and Policies will be Ashley, Larry, and Mary. All right, legislative update.
Not a whole lot to report. There's, I mean, there's a lot going on statewide in terms of discussions around budget, it's all about the biennial budget bill. We have met with our legislators, SDVSA is really active with this. John and I spoke a little bit today, we might be reaching back out just to advocate for some things with Representative Nayland and Senator Hutton. Supreme Court upheld the governor's line item veto, which maintained the 400-year, $325 a year increase, per pupil increase, so, but we don't know what the end result is going to be in terms of the budget. There's a lot of, probably something that has the most energy behind it is for a better reimbursement for special education, which would be definitely beneficial and helpful for us to try to meet our increasing expenses moving forward. But I don't really have anything else, John, anything?
It's really, it's, most of what's happening at the state budget right now is happening in caucus and in, within the Joint Finance Committee. So we anticipate the typical timeline will be end of June where that work is, is shared, and then a budget proposal is delivered to the governor. So we're anticipating June or July timeframe to, to have more information on that.
WASB does like a capital advocacy update kind of thing. It's usually every Friday, but this Friday they're not going to hold it because of the Memorial Day weekend, but, so they have published, you know, kind of like topics that are out there, and they give an update on the status of different legislation that's in the works for the school or education area, so.
That's all I have on that.
All right, thank you. Let's see, strategic planning feedback. First, I just want to say thank you to everyone that attended, I thought it was great. I really felt like the new format and doing it three nights for a shorter period of time really just got us into in-depth discussion quickly and got us some really good feedback, some great results. So you saw in your materials attached, it broke down each session with some feedback on that data, Mike.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, a little, any feedback that you might have. Thank you for your comments, Bren, in terms of format, we're trying to do things a little bit different, very light on presentation, focus on conversation, and input, keeping the timeframe of those meetings relatively short. I think we did a, I think it was two minutes over the first night, otherwise we got everybody in at 7:30 on the dot. On the other two nights, I thought there were good conversations, we had 85, 86 people signed up. There's, every year we have attrition, especially, I think, pretty, well, I think every single night we had it, the weather was really nice, probably not helpful. I would say probably 25 people that signed up didn't show up those nights, I didn't, I didn't get an actual count. But as I circulated to those conversations, we did have a nice cross-representation of, we had some community members who were not parents, we had parents, we had really good staff representation, we had some outstanding students who were there and got leaned on heavily in those conversations in terms of, especially as we moved to our special topics, which included the communication device policy consideration as well. So did, just curious and board feedback, so the, we did kind of the general discussion with the five guiding questions, which seemed to work pretty well. And then we had the, kind of the special topics that were focused on artificial intelligence or the communication device. Did both of those approaches seem to work well in your mind? Do you have any suggestions for improvement in the future?
I liked the format. I, I just wish there was more involvement from community members to get more feedback because, you know, Bren, you said earlier that there was, it was just a really small snippet of, you know, voices from the community, and I think if we had more feedback, it would be great. But I think the feedback that we did get from parents, community members, and students was great, it was great to hear what people had to say.
Yeah, thank you, we did, the larger community is always the hardest to reach, but, you know, the signup for it was in the perspective of the QR code. That's, community-wide mailings are the only way we can really get to people that are not parents or students or staff. And then, of course, we were able to hit the students, well, well, students, I asked administrators to directly recruit, but staff and parents, we sent a couple of emails to remind them to sign up, so we had a little bit of that. That was a heavier attendance, but we did get some community members who were there. And of course, we're dividing that number over three nights as well, but that is always the, I felt good about 86 people signed up, I think if they would all showed up, would have felt even better, but, like, I know especially that last night, we probably had a dozen people that were signed up that didn't come, so.
I mean, that was kind of my observations, too. I mean, it's like we had the right people invited and they indicated that they were going to attend, but then there were like a lot of no-shows in terms of when it actually came down to it. But one other thing, and obviously Natalie and folks that were there, I mean, I think it's always refreshing when we have the different voices of our students attending and participating in that, and I think obviously the group that was, or- And I think obviously the group that was facilitating the discussion, I mean, it was really helpful to get the student input and capture that as part of it, because I think they're giving us the straight scoop from their perspective, whether it was on the artificial intelligence or on the phone usage, things that are there. So, again, a shout-out, because both of you were at the same meeting, I think both of you were there, but there were other students that were there. So, we had students there every single night.
Yes.
Which was great, so.
I was actually going to ask Anna, the first Monday night, we were in the same group. And number one, I want to say thank you for your transparency. You're very brave. I appreciate it. From your standpoint, both of you, as students, did that format work for you? Did you find it easy to speak out on behalf of students? Or would it have felt easier had you had a separate group where it would have been just students with administration giving feedback?
Um, I thought the format worked really well for me. I thought it was really valuable to not only kind of bounce off of the parents there and the community members, but also I had, I think, one other student in my group, so that was helpful as well. But that's just me personally. I mean, I don't have that much of a problem sharing my ideas with people, no matter who they might be. But I don't know. Natalie, did you have a different idea?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I was the only student in my group, but I thought it was a great format to bounce off, especially a lot of the parents had questions that don't have parent, or don't have students that are at the secondary level. So, it was great to share that feedback. I would say, though, your idea of having an all-student group might be another, if you wanted another piece. I kind of talked about with my group individually, the idea of more students from a wider range of backgrounds, because I know the administration did recruitment, so a lot of those students are actively involved in like student government, or they work closely with our administration, but maybe pushing that invitation to a wider range of students might be a suggestion, as well as doing a separate student night for the board or just like administration as a whole to get those opinions. Because I know, like Anna said, I don't have a problem sharing my honest feedback with whoever, but I know some people may be intimidated by the demographic, so that might be a suggestion that I have.
Great ideas. Thank you.
I loved that it was three 90-minute meetings. I thought that was really good. And I'm going to suggest again, especially if we stick with the 90-minute format, that we offer childcare at one time. I think 90 minutes is really something we could manage. Yeah.
Thank you for that. I would, just one thing to note. So, in the big year, where we do the heavier feedback, we do do student-specific focus groups in each, in each building. So, it's nice to see students interact with the adults, and it's, but there is also a lot of value to having students just in their group, and so you can, that's the, that's the full voice. Thank you. I will do, I plan on kind of try to synthesize the feedback across the three nights, so I can kind of do a little bit of a summary of, of that information, so.
Thank you. Tammy, any citizen comments? Thank you. Then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Natalie, you're not opposed to adjourn? It's your last night?